Item number 10, Conduct of Business. First item is to receive report and provide direction to staff regarding alternatives for memory lane. The protocol for this item, because there was a lot of discussion at the previous meeting, we're going to hear from Mark Zeferrano, our city attorney, first. And then we're going to see if the council has any questions or comments from Mark at this time. Then we will hear, based on these comment cards, if you want to speak on this, please fill one out. We'll allow you three minutes to speak on this item. And then the council will hopefully give some direction to staff. So, Mark, staff report, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, we're going to be discussing alternatives for memory lane, and so that's why you'll see that heading on each and every one of the PowerPoint slides. We're going to go through tonight fairly briefly and quickly. So first off, to summarize what's already happened, about a month ago, at your city council meeting, you received a staff report and took a lot of public comment from members of the public, some of whom are here today and some of whom couldn't make it, probably due to the inclement weather. We're sorry about that. But you heard a staff report in which there were survey results of over 135, I think, residents, most of whom indicated they wanted to keep the lane open, some of whom indicated they want it closed. You also heard the public express concerns about, frankly, both of those alternatives. And so the city council directed us to come up with some alternatives and options for you all to consider. So staff had four goals when we embarked on this process. And the first goal was to consider each and every comment that every member of the public made, not only at the meeting last time, but also in all of the surveys, emails, and other information that the city got. And we, in fact, did that. Laura Russell, who's sitting here to my right and is thankfully helping me operate a PowerPoint presentation, compiled all of that information, and we looked through it carefully. The council's direction at the last meeting was to find some potential solutions to address all of these concerns. So what staff did is they suggested some alternatives that have been used successfully elsewhere. That was one of our goals. We didn't want to suggest alternatives that hadn't worked or that we didn't think were going to work. So tonight, when we go through those alternatives, it's important to keep in mind that, of course, the council could select one of those alternatives, some of them, all of them, none of them, either in stages or simultaneously. So you'll see when we get to the alternatives that there's a number of options for you that you could do either together, in conjunction, or by themselves. Staff also obtained some preliminary cost estimates for all of the alternatives, and you'll see some of those on the upcoming slides. Unfortunately, there's no funding for the memory lane improvements, if there are to be any, in this year's budget. However, there is a grant opportunity available to the city from the Safe Routes to School, and the city is applying for that grant, and if awarded, it may cover some of the improvements for calendar year 2013. So if you have some questions about that, Clara Fabry is here and available to answer those questions. But I wanted to be sure to mention that to you, and especially because council member O'Connell, who can't be here tonight, is the person who indicated that that was of interest to her. So what I thought we should do before we start is just take a look at some photographs and examine what memory lane looks like. So what Laura did this morning, before it started pouring rain, was took some pictures of different segments of the lane. And primarily, these are here to show you the variation in configuration and the logistics involved in trying to figure out a solution to the problems that were, that the residents indicated. So this is Elmta Poplar looking east. So now we're looking toward the bay. And this is the westerlymost section of the lane. And as you can see, in this section, there are houses whose side walls are right on the property line. You'll also see the, in the bottom picture, there are red curb and no ADA curb ramp. So that was one of the things that was addressed by some of the residents. And also notice that the red curb there is actually fairly short, and that certainly appears to cover the crosswalk there in the picture, but also is short enough to provide some on-street parking for the adjacent residents. So this is the same segment, looking east, a little bit closer. And you can see here, on the top picture, on the right-hand side, that there's those windows that are, you know, directly onto, onto the lane over there. On the bottom picture, you'll see that the front yard of the house on the left has some shrubs and a very low fence there. So this is the next section, and you'll see that this is different. This section of the lane, this is looking west now, has fences on the property line as opposed to the sides of houses. And those fences are fairly low. Laura reminded me that she's not very tall, and yet she was able to take these photographs standing up simply with her camera. So these are low fences of different configurations that do provide some buffer between the house and the property line, unlike in the earlier segment. Then if we take a look, this is sort of walking up the lane, looking west, you'll see the yield sign up there at the top of both of the photographs. But here, what's happened is we've walked past the fences now, and the fences have transitioned to a sort of high cinder block wall there on the left. And then also on the left, you'll notice that there's a gate over there that provides access for that resident into memory lane. And you'll notice that there's doorways also on the, on the property on the other side. So we also wanted to take a look as to what this looked like looking east. And again, this is a block, Poplar to Linden, characterized by fences only on the property line. And you'll see on the bottom picture how low the fences are, just a couple, three feet. And you'll also see, most importantly, on the top picture there, on the left one, that there's windows that are really right looking out over that, that fence there on the, on the right, looking right out over the lane and very, very close to it. So this is an example of Poplar to Linden looking west, and you'll see that this is the kind of ADA access that was built into one of the other blocks. Also note on the right-hand side of the picture there on the left, that there is some shrubbery there in the front yard of that property, not a wall, not a fence, but some shrubs. So when we looked at that in all of these pictures, we tried to figure out, well, if we had to put up some sort of fence or barrier, how would we do that? That was one of the things we were looking at in taking all these pictures. So then, just a couple more. We looked at some of the pictures of memory lane through Grace Honda, and this is looking east. You'll notice that it's characterized by a single bollard in the middle of, of the lane over there, actually in both sections there, in the top left-hand picture. And then you'll also see a fence, a cyclone fence with slats. This is the section of the, of the lane looking west now. And one of the features here you'll see is not only is there some trees and shrubbery, but also a relative lack of separation between the lane and the vehicles that are parked on each side. So with all this in mind, we tried to come up for you with some alternatives. And the first slide shows you some of the alternatives that we considered recommending for physical improvements. And the first one is to provide some fencing by the city to provide a buffer between the private and public spaces. And you'll see on all of those photographs, if you remember, that there's a blur between the public and the private space, especially with respect to those houses that are right up on the property line, but also with the houses that, that have fences and then the house behind it. So the second physical improvement that could be made is the city could allow residents to themselves build taller fences. And right now, they would need a variance to do that, but the city could find a way to allow those taller fences to come in to provide some additional privacy for residents whose fences are right on the property line. Why did we recommend these? For a couple of reasons. First of all, we think that a fence of some sort would reduce the incidence of vandalism. It would make it harder, deter people from throwing objects over the fence, which was one of the things that was emphasized by some of the residents. It would increase the separation between the public and the private space. And depending on how the fence is constructed, if it were, for example, a city fence, we could find a way to screen it with foliage, and it would reduce or deter the incidence of graffiti. One of the other suggestions that staff had was to place several bollards at the openings of each end of the lane. And the reason for that would be it would prevent vehicular access. I think some of the residents indicated that was a problem. It would, if not prevent, it would deter scooters and two-wheeled motorized vehicles. I think one of the residents indicated that was, that was an issue. So we can, that's, that was one of the things that staff came up with. Fourthly, there are some ADA improvements that obviously need to be done at that one section of the lane in terms of a curb cut. There's been some discussion about red curb and how far should those go. On the one hand, you want to be sure there's enough sight distance, both for pedestrians coming out of the lane into the street, and also for cars driving down the street so they can see the pedestrians. On the other hand, you don't want to red curb in front of people's houses so they can't park their, their cars there. And then finally, staff is recommending the possibility of relocating to Grace Honda segment, if that's necessary. And by the way, following up on the last meeting, staff did send a letter to the Grace Honda folks and asked at your direction for information regarding the proposed building or requirements that Honda would be imposing on them. And we did ask them to provide that information to staff, and they have not done so as of, as of tonight. So those are some physical improvements that could be made. We now have some improvements or options for what we refer to as an additional official presence. And first, and on the top of that list, is the possibility of installing some cameras. This is something that the police department and staff has worked very closely in analyzing. The police department believes that cameras would both deter crime and unruly behavior. It would certainly assist Parkside with any disciplinary problems they might be having. And it would provide additional security for all of the neighbors along the lane, and frankly, for everybody in, in the neighborhood. One of the other alternatives is that staff considered and is recommending is to reassign the school resource officer, SRO. That person could be deployed, as indicated in the staff report, to memory lane at particular times of the day when there's a lot of, of kids using it, primarily in the afternoon. And again, we think that an adult official presence would deter a lot of the negative behavior that the residents have told us about, and would certainly provide not only deterrent to those activities, but also if somebody is engaging in bad behavior, there'd be somebody there to catch them and stop them before it became a problem. The third thing that staff recommended is to continue working with Parkside on some solutions. And I'm pleased to report that the police department and the school have, in fact, gotten together to discuss some of the ideas, one of which was an increased penalty for students who are found to have engaged in negative behavior on memory lane, and the school is indicated they're in support of that. So the staff would certainly like to continue those efforts and those discussions so that we can make sure that we're partnering with them to address any of the problems. Last but not least, we had a fair bit of discussion about adopting a volunteer program for the city as a whole, not just for memory lane, primarily because it's not really cost-effective just to do it for one, one place in the city. The police chief has indicated this type of program has been very effective in neighboring cities, including Millbrae. It's definitely something to consider. However, there is an expense associated with it, and, you know, we talked a little bit about that in the staff report. So those are some of the alternatives that we considered and recommended, both physical and having a more surveillance and an official presence. A couple of things we also considered at your request was whether we should recommend formally vacating the lane. And as you probably know, that's a legal process that involves both the planning commission and city council, and they have to make a finding that the lane is unnecessary for present or future public use. And given the testimony that we heard last time and the survey results, it seems it would be difficult for staff to make that recommendation, that the lane is either not being used now or is not going to be used in the future, when we've had a fair bit of direct evidence that it is in fact being used now and in fact will be used in the future. Vacation would probably require an environmental review, but if you're willing or interested to consider it, we also have to reserve easements that run under the property. So that's an important consideration for a vacation. The other alternative that we looked at was either a temporary or permanent closure. And I think as the staff report pointed out with a fair bit of, of data, staff believes that the crime and unruly activity now is generally low, and certainly low compared to other similar areas where school lets out. Closure would impact those who use the lane frequently, and it's actually unclear how we would accomplish closure in a way that everybody would find acceptable. You can see from some of those photographs, it's sort of difficult to imagine how you'd put up a big gate or cyclone fence across the front of, of those, of the lane when there isn't necessarily a solid structure that goes all the way out in, in some of those properties. So it would not, it certainly raises some challenges as to how that would be done. Another issue that staff considered was the risk that if we did close the lane, it would merely displace whatever negative behavior is occurring on the lane into the neighborhood elsewhere. So that concludes my staff report. Be happy to answer any questions. And then, once we're done with that, the mayor indicated that we could obtain any additional input from the public. And then we'd love to hear from you, the city council, and provide us with some direction about how to proceed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions of the city attorney?
Mr. Mayor? Mark, regarding the vacating, you say that it's a legal process. Why is there a legal process?
That, that process is specified in the Streets and Highways Code under state law.
Streets and highways code?
That's correct.
Okay. So how does, how does a pedestrian walkway pertain to Streets and Highways Code?
So that's a good question. Public access ways of all kinds are covered in the Streets and Highways Code. It's not just streets and highways. So if a public entity wishes to take a public way and place it out of public service, it has to conduct a process and determine that the way is either not being used now or won't be used in the future for public use, among various other findings, but that's the most important one. And so a street vacation is a process that both the planning commission and the city council have to have a hearing on, and they have to make that finding and those decisions. Once it's vacated, then the way would revert to the adjacent property owners. That's, that's the essence of that legal process.
With, with an easement?
That's right. The city would retain an easement for utilities under it. That's correct.
With that said, when you talk about a buffer, specifically for those homes where zero lot line is the term, where the walls are right on the property line, what would, what would the buffer be? I mean, would you build a fence right up against the house, or would you have some airspace?
So staff, staff considered a number of possibilities, and as you can see from the configuration of properties, it's actually not that simple to figure out what a buffer would be. In some places, it looks like you could build a fence maybe a couple of feet in from the property line that would be a city fence that would then screen and provide a sort of green screen essentially for the view out of the windows that are looking right out onto the lane. In other places, it might be possible to install, for example, and by the way, this is all with irrigation. We're, we're not proposing that we, we plant something and then let it die. One of the other possibilities would be to plant some sort of planter boxes along there and then allow foliage to grow up onto a trellis or fence. That would be something else that might be considered. But we acknowledge that it's, it does present a bit of a challenge. In the areas where there's just fences on the property line, that's a little bit easier because, as I said, you can have a situation where residents could increase the size of their, or the height of their fence, or the city could somehow participate in that process. They already have a buffer.
Thank you.
Michael?
Mr. Chair. Thank you. I really wouldn't consider a fence in front of another fence a buffer. It still seems that the proximity is going to be an issue, and it's something that the, the residents that live right next to there brought up as an issue before, that we can beautify it, but does it really solve the problem? And I think having a large volume of people moving through that area that close to those houses is probably not going to be alleviated by adding a fence or even beautifying it, putting plants up. I also had a question about the costs that are proposed in here. It states the linear foot, or cost per foot of the fencing and the fact that there would be a $30,000 additional increase in there, but there's no dollar, the total dollar figure. So I, I guess I could have measured it and come up with a number. There's nothing in here that talks about annual maintenance. If the stuff is damaged or vandalized by the same people we're, we're trying to keep from causing trouble now, what's it going to cost to replace this stuff on an ongoing basis? That really wasn't addressed in there.
So just to, on that last point, you're right. We didn't address the ongoing cost of maintenance. We did look at trying to come up with a total cost for a fence, and the problem we had was, we didn't know exactly where the fence would be. You know, if you take 200 feet, which is each segment of the lane, and multiply it by four, and you say you're going to put 800 linear feet of fence down both sides of, each of the blocks of the lane, that's a fairly large number, and it's, it's, it's not necessarily a project that would solve or be effective at solving all of the problems. It seemed, when we looked at the individual houses and configuration on the lane, that some sort of fence or screening might be appropriate for some of the houses, but not all of them. So that's the reason why we didn't include a total number. But we hope that what we did include was, was helpful enough so you could get a ballpark of what we'd be talking about if we did 50 feet or 100 feet, for example.
Okay. And then relating to the, to the grant that you discussed, what, what is the total amount that we could hope to get from a grant?
So I'd like Clara Fabry to address that. She's been working with her staff diligently on getting that accomplished, and she has some details for you on that.
Good evening. Would depend on what your decision will be tonight. The grant application is due this upcoming Friday, and depending what will be your decision tonight, all of those items will be included in our grant application. This grant due date for this Friday is for a state-funded infrastructure-type of grant using state fund, and is more, all of the safety improvements certainly would be eligible. The fence is questionable, still under discussion with the grant management. Probably, if that would be your decision tonight, still would be included in our grant application, and all of us will see the final decision on if that, they will accept or say eligible item or not. But all of the remaining of the infrastructure-type of improvement would be eligible, and also up to 10% non-infrastrucure-type of expenses like enforcement and education. In the same time, on other, on other grant opportunities available for non-infrastrucure-type of improvement like education and enforcement, this is a regional, region-wide safe route to school program. And on, is available about $2 million for two years for this program, and can be, the application can be filled out anytime. The school can apply for this grant directly also, or jointly with the city, the city can, with the school, both of those agencies can apply for this available grant.
And so in the original grant, infrastructure would mean the ramps at the sidewalks?
The ADA ramps, warning signs for pedestrian, maybe including some flashlights, also the video cameras installed alongside those type, plus the fence, depending what would be your recommendation on lighting, if additional lighting will be necessary. All of those items then could be included in the grant application.
Okay. Thank you. And, oh, a few more questions. In the presentation, you mentioned that some of these solutions had been used elsewhere, and I was wondering if you could elaborate on where, where else we could see examples of this being used and what situation, what the situation was and how it was alleviated by these solutions?
That's an excellent question. I'd like Chief Telford to address that. He has some experience with the cameras and also the patrols and volunteer service issues. And Laura Russell may have some comments on the fencing and buffer issue.
So in terms of what was successful previously, we had a graffiti problem back in 2006, 2007. And graffiti was up high throughout the city. Back at Beckner Shelter, we installed a camera, and our incidence of graffiti declined. Now, again, they also declined elsewhere in the city, but we did find that to be an effective use of the camera.
Okay.
And any other questions related to?
Okay. No, I, I think that's fine. Laura, if you could address the fencing question?
In general, these strategies are considered to be best practices in planning and urban design. So we have had some positive experience with having plantings to reduce graffiti. There are some excellent examples now of taller fences that aren't as luminous, they're not as solid, but plants are, can grow up them, so those are commonly used in walkways. We could certainly get you examples of exact locations and photographs, if you'd like to see those. There's also a well-known idea in urban design, and that's the transition of public space to private space. And so you usually want to go through that transition of being wholly in your private space, and you know that you're in control in that area, and then you transition to a semi-public space. And so that's usually the area in, in somebody's front yard. And then a semi-public space is, is closer to the sidewalk, and then the public space is out in the sidewalk and out in the street. And so we, we know that, as planners and urban designers integrate that concept into most street designs that we may design today. And usually the places that you feel most safe and comfortable, those are the places that have a good transition from public space to private space. So in this case, we can really see that there's not a good transition from public to private. And so that's why we do feel that, for example, a secondary fence, maybe of a different construction material or with vegetation, may help to provide that transition, even if it's a relatively close transition, given that, that constrained space. And we could still have a little bit more transition from private space in the backyard into the public space in the walkway.
Okay. Thank you. And, Mark, getting back to the question of the finding of having this area not used, basically, and we did hear from a lot of people that say that they, they do use it, but I'm wondering, as a percentage of the entire population of the city, at what point do we determine that it has an overall benefit to the entire city versus to a very small group of people that may benefit from its existence?
So that would be really a question of fact for the planning commission and for you to determine in the legal proceedings and public hearings that you'd have to hold regarding the vacation. And there would be evidence on both sides of that issue. I think there's evidence in front of you now on that issue, but it would be a decision that you'd have to make with little clear guidance. I, I will say, the little clear guidance from case law, I will say that, that given a situation where we've had some dozens, if not more, individuals say that they use the lane once a day, every day, every day of the week, and so on, it, staff would find it difficult to recommend that the city council make that finding.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Rico? Okay. We have no more questions of staff. We do have two speakers that have signed up. First, George Corey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is George Corey, 700 El Camino in Millbrae. Represent the eight homes who are on the lane. Commend staff for going to a lot of work and doing some real research. The first time anybody's looked at ways to cure the problem that I know about, and this problem's been going on for more than 10 years. And at least two mayors had it called to their attention in their business. And I personally had Mr. Ruane come to my office. He offered to come, and I thank you, about eight months ago, before we ever got this thing even to the council. We're gratified to have somebody pay attention to it. Now, on behalf of the people on the lane, they are still hopeful at some point he will see the wisdom in closing the lane because they still see that as the only thing that makes sense. But what else you do, when you go through this, will be a process, I'm sure that you work on some of these proposals. And I have to, once again, say that survey is meaningless in terms of the way it was put together for this purpose. And I wish staff wouldn't use that unless they got a survey that, at least we feel, is a proper one, and explained the problem or the potential reasons for closing it. Now, that aside, you have a lane 10 feet wide. You have a lot of different designs on hoes. lot of different designs on hoes. If you put in a fence and you put in some landscaping, you've probably used up two feet on each side of that fence. Now you've got six feet of travel. You probably can't get two wheelchairs past each other. I mean, you're narrowing this to a very, very, almost unpleasant situation. You put in planters on the side, if you put in a fence, you've now created a trap between the home or its fence and the new fence. It's a garbage collection. And that's something that nobody can get to, to clean out, because of proximity of the two fences. You can have a very, you would have a very difficult time getting uniformity, because some homes, as you saw in the photos, have their windows on the first floor. Yes, it would be nice if they could raise them as high as they want a fence, or you could put your fence, the city fence, as high as you want, but who in their homes wants to look out and see a fence three feet away from their house? There are so many different variations, and I think the difficulty in building a uniform kind of buffer are difficult. Let me address one other thing, because I think Mr. Ruane is looking at me like I'm getting laid here. Is that so? Is that okay? One other thing, Jim. Look, in the city plan, in the city proposal here, they say, "Look, you go down to Memory Lane. If we can't go through where the car dealership is," and that's something for the car dealership, who will speak for themselves here tonight, "we turn right, and we go to the end of the car dealership, and we put Memory Lane there, and then we go down to El Camino." Doesn't common sense tell somebody? That's a relative absurdity in light of this whole package that we're talking about on people's safety and comfort in their homes, because if they come down the end of Memory Lane, and they turn right, and they get onto the end of Honda, they're 50 or 60 feet from Crystal Springs Road. To me, there's something about that that says, "Are you kidding me?" Sort of. Suppose you had to turn to the north, and go toward the hotel, and you put Memory Lane there, out to the street. Aren't you doing the same thing when they're going to Genevieve? The people who talked here about having a place to walk or exercise surely can't be saying, "We can't walk another 65 feet in one direction and end up in virtually the same place." So when you're going through this, please keep in mind the potential, at least, of closing that lane, because I will say this to you. If you got a survey, you wanted to close that lane, and you can get one, I assure you, and all you had to do was to bring five feet of fence from each home where it meets in the middle, you could retain an easement over it for the city forever. When people come down, there's simply a fence there, like there are on homes all across the street. And then you've solved that problem for a lot of people in your neighborhood who shouldn't have to live under those circumstances. So once again, thanks to staff for really looking at this thing. No one's ever looked at it before this way. We do like the idea of the cameras. Those are always good. Maybe they can be used somewhere else where they'll be able to be of better economic value, and closing this street will make sense to you at some point in time. Thank you.
Jennifer Rice?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members.
Right into the microphone, Jennifer.
Good evening.
Tell us who you are.
My name is Jennifer Rice, and I'm an attorney. I represent Grace Honda. And one of the things I'd like to do this evening is address Grace Honda's need for expansion. We did receive the letter, and unfortunately, there is very little in the way of documentation at this point, but there is some, and I can walk the council and staff members through. Grace Honda is a franchise, and its franchise agreement has specific requirements for size, layout, and appearance. In the case of Honda, this is called the Honda Image Program. The most recent iteration of the Honda Image Program came out in July of 2011, and I think it's proprietary information, but I do have copies that I would be glad to pass around, but not reproduce, if anybody would like to take a look at it. The first problem with Grace Honda is its building size. The minimum requirement for dealerships, for Honda dealerships, is 27,000 square feet. Grace Honda's current building is 19,000 square feet, and that's on two floors. The image requirement requires the 27,000 square feet to be on one floor. And when you think about the nature of an auto dealership, that makes sense. You have a service department, you have a showroom. These things generally happen on one floor. It's possible that Grace Honda can comply in part with the Image Program by putting some facilities on the second floor, for example, staff lounges, things like that. But it's reasonable to anticipate that Grace Honda, in order to comply with this program, is going to have to expand its building footprint from between 8,000 to 14,000 square feet more. There is an additional, a requirement for an additional facility to be added to the dealership that doesn't already exist, and that's an express service department, where it looks kind of like an oil change place. People can drive in, have simple service performed there while they wait in a lounge, and then drive out again. If Grace Honda is allowed to undertake the remodel, to comply with the Image Program, rough calculations indicate that the footprint will extend beyond the current location of Memory Lane. So the staff in the staff report recommended, if that were in fact the case, that Memory Lane be relocated to the southern side of the Grace Honda lot. But of course, that side of the lot, the Grace Honda building abuts the Walgreens building. And it's not anticipated that the current building be demolished. What we're talking about is an expansion. So there is no room on the southern perimeter of the lot to put a pedestrian walkway through. Moreover, because of the size of the expansion, and because of the additional needs of traffic circulation and ingress and egress points, there really wouldn't be sufficient room left on the lot for a relocated pedestrian walkway. It just, it just wouldn't make sense. In addition, if you remember, there is the pipe, and I'm assuming that the city could want to maintain some kind of access there, or points of access. So our thinking is that, well, Grace Honda's lot is already only half the size of the minimum required lot size for Honda. And Grace Honda gets around that problem by leasing other space on El Camino. But spaces at a premium on the dealership, if the dealership is going to remain there. If Grace Honda can't comply with the Image Program at its current site, then it will have no alternative but to relocate. Grace Honda has a second concern with regards to Memory Lane, which in a way is every bit as important. And it should be noted that it's really rare for pedestrians other than students, high school or middle school students, I guess, to cross the Grace Honda property. Grace Honda has been watching, and it rarely is the part of Memory Lane that crosses Grace Honda used by anybody other than students. As you know, Grace Honda's business involves delivery vehicles, but also customers driving onto the property to drop off their cars for service, to pick up their cars for service, coming in to buy parts. Those customers are generally not familiar with the layout of Grace Honda's lot. And when they come in, they're looking for the entrance, they're looking for the service department, the parts department, they're looking for parking spaces. And the one thing that they're probably not looking for is large numbers of high school students, at the end of the day, on an auto dealer's lot. This is, this is a constant worry and a constant problem for Grace Honda. Grace Honda has to allocate staff members outside for the specific purpose of ensuring the safety of the students crossing the lot, and that's a burden that they shouldn't have to bear. It's an inherently unsafe situation, and I hear reference to the Safe Routes to School grant. And I think that it's ironic that people are talking about a safe route to school when the children are walking across a busy auto dealership to get to school. It's probably only a matter of time before someone is injured there, and it's fortunate that it hasn't happened already.
Yeah, we're going to have to wrap it up here, Jennifer, pretty quick.
All right. There's also the damage that occurs to Grace Honda's own property. Last year, there were $15,000, over $15,000 worth of damage done to vehicles on the lot being scratched. Not all of it, I'm sure, was done by the students, but some of it was. Backpacks, they squeeze in between the cars, the backpacks scratch the cars. And I would like to echo what Mr. Corey said, that Memory Lane across the Grace Honda lot is only a shortcut if you actually leave Memory Lane and walk diagonally across the Grace Honda lot, because Memory Lane there parallels Crystal Springs Road and Genevieve. So the choice is either to walk up Linden and then down, to get to the bus stop, for example, walk up Linden, down Crystal Springs, or to walk across Memory Lane and up El Camino. Either way, you're walking in a rectangle, and it's the same difference. It's not a shortcut. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, the reason I let you go a little longer is because this is some of the information we've been asking for for quite a while, regarding American Honda, and the square footages, and those types of things. So I think that's helpful for us. The question I have for staff is, so Memory Lane goes right through the middle of Honda. Is there piping there, an easement? What's there?
I believe there is an easement under there. I'd have to ask Clara to confirm that, but I think that's one of the sections that there's an easement under.
There's a 12-inch water line.
Okay. For the benefit of the public, might you fill us in on what's there?
Based on my best memory, is a water main line under that property. Certainly, no construction can be built over the water main line. That means if any construction would be needed to be extended over that water line, the water line would need to be relocated to another location.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Discussion? What would you like to see? What would you like to do? Michael?
Well, out of everything I heard proposed, in my opinion, the cameras would probably be the best solution, but it also seems that the funding is very iffy. And what I was really hoping that we could do is come up with a real solution that could be implemented fairly short order. And actually, any of these solutions, if they're dependent on a grant, I mean, we haven't even applied for the grant. We don't know how much money we could get from the grant. We have a very limited idea of what could be implemented in terms of what these fences would look like, how they would integrate with each of the homes on the lane. And so, I don't know. I guess I'm not, I'm not that impressed with what the options are right now.
If the funding were there, what would you like to see?
Definitely the cameras, I think, because beautifying, honestly, it's an alley, and I've made every effort to walk up and down it through different parts of the days. I haven't seen that many people using it. To spend a lot of money on beautifying something that's really an alley and not, and a lot of people said they walked through it, and I'm sure they do, but the impact wouldn't be that great. And to make that level of investment, especially in this economy, just to make the alley look nicer, and I don't necessarily agree that it would be that much of a benefit. I don't see it being that great of a buffer, and I know it is, it's better than nothing. But having people in large volumes that close to a residence, I think is pretty unique in our city. We have fairly generous front yards everywhere else. We don't have people right next to our yards in most places, so it's fairly unique that way. And so I think we should look at it in that light as well.
All right.
So, I mean, if anything, I'd like to see the cameras. That seems to be like it would be, if we have shown success with cameras in other areas, and we think that that's something that would mitigate what we're seeing, I think that would, that would be a solution. In terms of abandonment, it looks like that would be very hard to do, unfortunately, because I think if we were able to just say, "Let's get rid of it, and let the homeowners put fences up as they see fit," that would have been a nice, easy solution. But if that's not an option to us, I think I'd still like to see some cost estimate on putting up some sort of fence, maintaining the alley as a city property, but closing it off. And then we could make at least a financial comparison for what those gates would cost versus cameras, or other options that are being proposed.
Thank you. Rico? You're not ready? Vice Mayor?
I'll keep mine brief. I'm not convinced in any of the options to keep it open. I'm not convinced with the arguments that state that you're giving in to the element, to the bad element, and that closing it just sends the wrong message. I have put myself in the position of 11 homeowners, or X amount of homeowners, and I would be appalled at what was going on. And my efforts would be to close it. Short of closing it, I agree, agree with my colleague, that the first thing we should do is to, is to put cameras up, you know? If this is, if this is what we need to do to prove that, or deter any issues, any problems going on, you know, in those two blocks, that's fine. But, no, I'm, I'm not, I don't agree that any form of beautification or any form of buffering is going to alleviate the problem.
Rico?
I would agree with Mr. Corey, as far as, it was good to see this report come back with various options and thoughts on what we could do to help improve the site, if we can. I think some of the things that we're all concurring to is the cameras, Mr. Corey said as well. That is something that's been proven, as the chief said, at Beckner Shelter. I don't know how those get operated, as far as the power, or how that is facilitated. Light sensors may also be something that could help curtail something at night. I would think the barriers at each of the entrances that we talked about, so if there's any vehicle type access that may occur on occasion, that's stopped. I know somebody even told me, aside from stepping up our police officer that facilitates with the schools, is that we also have parking enforcement with the Cushman, that, you know, when they're making their loop around certain areas of town or doing their parking enforcement, that maybe they can go by there, take a look down, and just extra sets of eyes at all times would help enforce. I think those are some of the options that I've heard tonight that might be an initial step in trying to curtail some of the challenges that the neighbors and the residents are facing. As I said two weeks ago, I think we owe it to at least exercise and try these options before the ultimate other suggestion, which is closure of Memory Lane, which obviously has some more legal parameters. The other question, we're talking about grants, as Councilmember Salazar said, and I'm also one of those that, you know, it sounds great, and I didn't quite get how much could be applied or how much we'd get, but again, it's not been applied for. My concern is that, as has been brought up, this is something that's been going on since October. October, this is something that's been going on in the past, and so I'd like to see this get addressed quickly and not wait for a grant if that's at all an option. I think the residents have been patient and waiting, and I think that they deserve some type of action as soon as possible.
Thank you. I was on the subcommittee, still am, actually, with Michael Salazar, and we have the, had the privilege of sitting down with the homeowners directly and hearing, first of all, their grief, and I was pretty moved, actually, they went through a lot. Then we did a survey and actually found out, whether Mr. Corey agrees or not, that there were a lot of people, and I got a lot of emails over the last number of months, people saying, "Hey, there must be something else you can do." I use that all the time. We tried to work with Parkside before. I made a suggestion myself about maybe the students adopting Memory Lane, working that way. That was pretty much shot down, but it sounds like the atmosphere there is changing a little bit. That's a good thing. What I would like to see as a start, and this is just a start, is I think we need ADX accessible crosswalks where they don't exist, as some do already. I think you need some bollards to prevent any type of motorized vehicle from going in and out of there, whether it be staggered fencing going in or whether bollards would do it. And I think you need the cameras. They've proved successful in other parts of our city, and I'd really like to see what those three things are going to hopefully accomplish. You're coming into April. We only have another two months of school, but I'm really encouraged to see that the police department is working closely with Parkside, and apparently, most of the damage that's been done over the last number of years are from the students. And it's a very unfortunate thing, but I don't think just closing Memory Lane is going to solve the situation. I said to Angela Adiego, who was here at one of the meetings, principal of Parkside, that there's a systemic problem, and kids have to take responsibility, parents have to take responsibility for their children's actions. And I don't think she has to be a police officer, but I am very encouraged that she's going to work with our officers to help to curtail the problem, you know, whether that be fines, whether you find out that you get into people's pocketbooks and they start thinking twice about what they do and the ramifications of their actions. So I'm encouraged. As far as Honda, I would, there's a water line going down the middle. We heard tonight they need 27,000 square feet on one footprint. I would want to know what, and we could probably develop this pretty quick, what would it cost to relocate a water line like that? I mean, is it really possible just to say, "We got to relocate the line, and it's going to be $150,000 bucks," or is it $15,000? I have no idea. So I'd really like to find out what that cost is so we have some options there. And if American Honda really wants to work with the city to participate, I think we can work together on some of those items. If it is in fact a very relatively, relatively short walk to Crystal Springs Road or over to Genevin, maybe we'll look at that and Honda standalone. That's not, doesn't seem to be the big issue. I think the issue is with the residents. Honda's there during the day most of the time, sometimes in the evenings, but the people actually live on that lane 24 hours a day, and I think that's a real important issue here, and I'd like to start with some of those items I talked about. And it's easy for me to say, but maybe the city can find the money. I'd just throw that out to manager, but I have no idea what all of these items cost, and maybe we can get a breakout of what we might be able to do with grant money or, you know, something else. So those are, those are my suggestions. City Manager?
So we've heard a, four different opinions, and it sounds like some consensus around the idea of further interest in the installation of cameras. I heard the next most prevalent comment had to do with the installation of barriers or bollards to prevent unauthorized vehicular access, motor skaters and that type of thing, into the, into the lane. So at this point, I would suggest, if it is the council's interest, that you consider directing us to proceed with one or both of those strategies and to bring back a more precise timeline, schedule, and cost. I don't have any magic to offer you in the way of cost. We, you know, we believe that the Safe Routes to School grant opportunity is one viable option, but obviously, as you've heard and commented on, that will take time. So the next best potential option would be to use one-time resources that the city has in his bank account. That would be, need to be a decision of the city council itself. So we would be able to return to the city council on those two or any other additional options that the council would wish us to explore further as to more precise cost and schedule, at your pleasure.
Right. I would also like the information on the Honda lot, as far as the water line and what the relocation.
The relocation, the cost for relocation of the line? And I heard Councilmember Salazar requested a, an estimate of the cost to close off the, I guess it would be the, the four ends of the two pieces of the lane in the residential area.
Correct. Okay.
Go through the chair if I could ask?
Yes, Michael.
One other detail on the bollards. If we were to put those in there, would there still be sufficient width on either side for a wheelchair to get through?
That would be required, and so we would have to look at that more carefully to evaluate how precisely to do that, but we cannot restrict access by handicapped individuals on a public way.
Go through the chair. If we're looking at potential of cameras, which seems to be consensus, then obviously we're gonna have to have electricity, so can we not, in the same vein, just look at potential lighting or sensor lighting, because you're gonna have to get electricity for the cameras at some point unless they're operated differently?
You're talking about motion-activated sensors?
You're correct.
Yes, we can take a look at that if it's the council's pleasure.
We can look at that. My only concern with that is in the evening, I wouldn't want to disturb the residents anymore if a cat or a dog walks up and down the alley and it fires off a bunch of lights in somebody's living room or bedroom or something, so, but it wouldn't hurt to look at the cost of those.
And if a resident does, so deemed wants it, then maybe that's something we can consider, but at least we'll have the information, because I think the important thing is moving the ball forward and getting the information so we have it at our disposal and make decisions quickly.
Can I get clarification? I wasn't really clear. The city manager was finishing up her comments on satisfying a request from Councilmember Salazar. What were you saying as far as a cost of closing off for, for the openings? Is that what you mentioned?
My understanding of Councilmember Salazar's comment was that he had an interest to get a more precise understanding of what it would cost to put in, essentially to put a barrier at each of the four ends of the residential segments of the lane in order to prevent access. In other words, what would it cost and how would fence be installed in order to close the lane? Am I correctly understanding?
That is correct. So what it would cost to close it, basically, in the residential section? Oh, okay. And that would, I mean, and, well, I mean, that's what I've been asking for, is to get, have a, you know, have a scenario of what would take. I mean, I know we've gotten that far, we've gotten a lot further as far as, you know, what the details, what the conditions are getting in vacating, you know, vacating the lane, but, so there's just, so now there's just going to be a cost on, on closing the openings versus, versus the, versus the procedure, versus the procedure in actually getting it vacated?
Correct. Our staff report this evening identified the procedural issues that would, that would need to be addressed by the city council, by the planning commission, in a, in action, in considering an action to either vacate or abandon the lane. As I understood it, however, the question was, what would it cost to physically accomplish that once the procedural hoops had been jumped through? I think that was the question.
Well, I'm assuming then we also have the option of maintaining that as city property, but also closing it, meaning that we don't have to vacate it. It can remain city property but be closed to public access.
Yes, but as I understand it, the abandoning the, the use as a public lane or a public access area would require the procedures associated with abandonment.
It'd be the same procedure?
Abandonment procedures, yes.
Okay.
Okay. We have a consensus. Everybody agrees? All right. You have your direction?
Yes, if it's, as I outlined it a moment ago. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. And thank everyone for talking on this. Appreciate it.